Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education Regular Meeting. It is April 9th. Are we in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
Could you please call the roll?
Why then?
Here.
Carolyn.
Here.
Do it.
Here.
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 Thank you. And tonight, we have the Pledge of Allegiance being said by four of our Lakeside Elementary students: Talia Pavick, Gemma Wolfgram, Samuel Tritt, and Allison Strangeway. If you'd all rise and join them.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to justice for all.
First off, thanks for having me tonight. We have a lot of really awesome things that we're celebrating at Lakeside. Not only are those four awesome students at Lakeside, but they're also members of our Student Council, and so that was part of the reason they were invited tonight. And obviously, they're heading out here at this part, but they do a lot of great things at our school, raising money, and that's something that I'm really proud of, of what we have going at Lakeside, is just that sense of community and the building leadership around Lakeside is just awesome. Lakeside made a decision last year before I was actually the principal to go all on board with the CKLA field study, and we are seeing a lot of really awesome things that are coming with that, high levels of student engagement, a lot of teachers really get involved on like the ground level of seeing what that all looks like and how we can benefit our students. We're finding right now that as we are finishing up some eye-ready and forward testing, we are feeling that, and student feedback to us is just they're feeling really prepared, and a part of that is the high rigor assessments that come in especially grades three through five. We're seeing an increase in vocab, morphology, grammar embedded into those three, five lessons, and really at a kindergarten level, which we're excited to see how it builds up, that increased time spent on phonological awareness, really that listening to sounds. Math, a special shout-out to our fourth grade team, they are just a dynamic team who's worked really, really hard to do a lot of great planning. In one of their most recent units, we saw about 58 students proficient on a certain skill at the beginning of the units, all the way to 100% at the end, so just a team that works so well together. And that's really the case for a majority of our teams at Lakeside, they do an awesome job planning and preparing for what our students are needing. From a social-emotional behavior standpoint, we've had an awesome welcome back from spring break. We set up a lot of different kindness initiatives at our school to come back, just a good reminder of certain expectations. We have continued check-in and checkout, we have community mentoring that's happening, we have social academic groups that are going on as interventions. Again, a lot of awesome people in our community and in our staff that are wrapping our hands around our students. We put out on kind of a trial run what we call the Black Wolf Trail about Christmas time, which is kind of a sensory path that we have for students, and we have a number of students that are kind of trained on what that looks like and really finding that that's kind of a good tool for if students are needing a break or just some extra time to get some movement out. But the thing that I really just want to highlight most is in my transition back to Oshkosh as I was what's a teacher here, I just, I feel incredibly welcomed by the staff that we have at Lakeside. We have a number of amazing, amazing family and community members. Erin Cole, Kristin Berger, and Amy Ashton have all been great supports for me too and kind of my onboarding process too into this role, and I feel highly supported, highly celebrated in all the great things that we're doing, and I encourage anybody to stop on out to see the great things that are happening.
Questions for Ryan? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tonight, we will be honoring a veteran, and his name is Russell Deener.
So we have a proclamation, if you will, that I want to be able to read and then be able to have this awarded to Russell, so come on up. We can get him around and applause. All right. So the Oshkosh Area School District and the Oshkosh community have a long history of recognizing veterans for their service and sacrifice. This recognition has taken many forms, from Veterans Day commemorations in schools to the Oshkosh West Veterans Wall and the Oshkosh North Veterans Courtyard. Tonight, we have the distinct honor and privilege to recognize a veteran in our community by awarding a veteran's diploma. Russell Deener, a former Oshkosh West High School student, served just under a year in the United States Marine Corps as a private during the Vietnam War. He was stationed in San Diego, California, but his service ended prematurely due to severe injury. His honorable discharge in January of 1974, having demonstrated remarkable courage and selflessness in answering the call to serve his nation. Mr. Deener has always, had always dreamed of obtaining a high school diploma and was encouraged by the Wisconsin Disabled Veterans to pursue a veteran's diploma. We extend a thanks to Mike Hurt for supporting Mr. Deener and his family throughout this process. Mike wanted to be here tonight, but he wasn't able to, but he did leave us just a quick letter, just want to read a paragraph from that. Mike said, "I cannot attend tonight's meeting due to the attendance at Lenten Services. However, I wanted to share that I'm very pleased to see Russell Deener will be receiving his high school diploma tonight." I'd like to recognize Katie Sell, Dr. Barbara Herzog, and Julie Conrad-Peters for their efforts to ensure that this became a reality for Russell and his family, and especially his spouse, Patty. So that was from Mike. So local school boards in Wisconsin have authorized to award high school diplomas to veterans who left high school before graduating in order to join the US Armed Services during a designated war period. We have determined that Mr. Deener has met that requirement, and it is with great pride that we hereby award him the honorary diploma from Oshkosh West High School on the ninth day of April 2025. On behalf of the Oshkosh Area School District and a grateful community, we thank you for your service and sacrifice to our country. Congratulations. Well done. All right, thank you so much. Congratulations.
All right, tonight, we have a lot of art recognition. We're very excited to have the Northside students here with us this evening. Kim, are you going to be reading? Okay, perfect. Our first recipient is Joshua Rivers.
That's beautiful.
You want to go Ryan over here? Try going to give him a minute? Oh, yay. You shouldn't show all the others. Thank you.
Emma Schultz.
Thank you.
Wyatt Balki. Joshua Rivers.
Oh, that's gorgeous.
Penya Richards.
It's beautiful artwork.
Hala Alali. Isaiah Dentor. Sarah Zint.
Or Zara Zint, sorry.
Alexa Lor. Haley Kong. Alyssa Parrot. Morgan Helts. Jack Shinkton. Ellen Rivers Shrooby. There's a brother here to maybe come up and get the award? Is that what I hear?
Or Joshua should get it for her.
Alice Jong. Talia Vu. Ryder Stewart. Ellie Zinders. Erica Veng. Kadel Harrison. Major Proctor.
And a shout-out to Jenna Larson, who I see in our teacher here this evening. Any other our teachers? Jenna does a great job. Thank you for having all of your kids here. Appreciate it.
Yes, as we gather today, we want to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we're on the ancestor of homelands of the Ho-Chunk Nation and Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Oneabago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respects to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Next is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any reason to change the order of the agenda? Okay, then it will stay as presented. Board President's Report. I have three things I'd like to say this evening. I'd like to thank the community for getting out and voting. It was some great community discussion and all the listening sessions that were held, and I think we learned a lot about our community and those things that were important to our So again, thank you very much for getting out the vote. Brian and I have been part of the chancellor's dinner program, prospective chancellor's dinner program, and it's really been a great process in that the community has been involved, that we had, I think, 12 people there last evening representing all different parts of Oshkosh, asking prospective candidates questions about why they wanted to come to Oshkosh and what they were going to do here, learn more about their priorities. The last one is this evening, and do you know when they're going to be finalizing?
I would think within the next couple of weeks, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we met some great people over the past three nights, very excited about the resurgence of the relationship with UW-Oshkosh. I'd also like to congratulate everyone that ran for school board in this last election: Jacob Wolf, Molly, Mike Ford, and congratulations to Molly Smiltnick and Mike Ford, our two newest board members.
Thank you.
And that's all I have for my President's Report. Superintendent's Report.
All right, so we'll start with the Wildcats, with Jory.
All right. We had a lot of good stuff happening in the last couple of months at West, so this is all of the stuff we had in the last couple of months, so it's a lot, bear with me. ACT testing, that was March 19th after being rescheduled due to technology issues, and then April 2nd and 3rd for pre-ACT for the freshmen and sophomores. We had an all-city orchestra concert at North High School on February 22nd, and it was from third grade to 12th grade. It was really awesome. The ABBA remix, or the ABBA piece was really fun to listen to. Blood drive, we had that at February 14th, we collected 62 units of blood, and we had 32 first-time donors, which was really awesome. District solo ensemble took place on March 1st, also at North High School as well, and we have a lot of students going to State from this as well. Lots of track and field records and awesome placing at indoor track and field state, so we had some school records from Kayana, Sidney, and Clark, and grade-level records from Kayana, Kylie, Morgan, Owen, Sidney, and Clark, and then just some more top-10 finishes as well, and that was held at UWO last weekend. State gymnastics, they beat their own school record for beam, and Lydia got second team all around, and Neva got first team for floor at State, which was really awesome to see. State wrestling, Eddie took second place, Ryland took fourth, which was awesome. I believe they're like, I think, the third time in West history to bring home two medals from State. Dukka had State, and we had some awards for Lizzie, Will, and Sam. State bowling, girls placed sixth overall, and Shay specifically placed 10th. Boys took seventh overall with Logan at sixth place. Forensics State was also last weekend, we had finalists with Piper, Ali, and Jaclyn, and then we had semifinalists Tena, Sam, and Leila, and they will be headed to Forensics Nationals. American Legion Oratorical Contest, Rowan Stelflug won city, county, and division, and she competed at regionals recently as well. WASC State Conference, I was a co-chair, and it was really awesome. This was the first time we've hosted that in, I want to say, over 30 years, so it was hosted at Madison, and we even had a special presentation from West's own Mrs. Hanson. Some upcoming events, we have State Solo Ensemble, and that will be held at UW-Oshkosh on April 26th. We have a ton of West students going to that, which is really awesome to see representation for all three music departments. Prom is May 3rd this year, and we have a tangled theme, so that will be a lot of fun. And speaking of prom, there is a prom dress closet that's a collaboration between West and North High School, but it is held at North High School. AP prep season, we got less than a month before the start of AP exams, and this year, they're all at least hybrid or fully online, so no more paper tests. They're rolling out a new system. Dukka Internationals will be taking place April 26th through 29th in Florida, and we have Sam and Will going to that, which is really awesome to see. Spring play is the tempest this year, so we got another Shakespeare, and that's the 25th through the 27th. And just last weekend, Wave Robotics qualified to go to World Championships, and that, we leave next Tuesday, which is really cool. This is the second year in a row we've gone. Last year, we won the Impact Award, and this year, we won for Engineering Inspiration. We also went undefeated in all of qualification matches and capped in the Second Alliance. And I don't have a slide for it, but the Altus Art Show was also last weekend, Art in the Gardens, and I know there were a ton of West students there. I personally had a piece there as well. We had some top finishes from West, which was awesome.
Amazing.
And I think that's the last slide I have.
Excellent. Jory, I just want to thank you for your leadership, so I know it's crazy busy this time of year, but both hosting at the Student Council level, at a state level, and then the Wave Robotics was an incredible competition, so thanks for your continued leadership all the way through the end.
Thank you.
I was so excited to see the WASC stuff. I did that in junior high, and state, like hosting the state conference is such a huge deal, and congratulations to West, and I know that your advisors were super excited about it too, and you guys did an amazing job, like that's so cool.
Can I ask a quick question? If somebody wanted to donate to the prom closet, how would they do that? Is it at both schools or?
That is a good question. I believe you would contact, it looked like on the post that they, that West had made, there was an email linked, I believe it was for bougie, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So let's check in with Sparty, this is going to be February and April updates. So Spartans Give Back Communities 2 hosted their annual Super Bowl. Teachers were able to bring in soups for a fundraiser, and Ms. Carbonay won the Golden Spoon, while communities raised over $1,000 toward supporting the A and D V Fund, so that supports school supplies, hygiene, and Spartan needs as well. So Spartan Pride also hosted a food drive to give back to the community and support to the local Oshkosh area community pantry. The Spartan Musicals, the Spartans Choir had already prepared for the musical Catch Me If You Can. I personally saw it, I thought it was really fun, it was probably one of the best musicals I saw so far. It was starring Josh Hawley at the Grand. The Spartans Music Department was also preparing for solo ensemble during that time as well. So Sasquatch Week, so during the last week of January, Oshkosh North held their annual Sasquatch event that led up to Winter Formal. Sasquatch consists of pep assembly, this year, we did our first Ironman volleyball. That was crazy, that was really fun though. We hosted a pep assembly, Winter Formal, and some fun Excel sessions that teachers were able to show their fun. So for boys' basketball, it was 10 to 9, girls' basketball, 5 to 15, wrestling, 0 to 1, ice hockey, 1 to 12. Dance, dance season officially ended, and then unfortunately, they did not place in competition, but were able to show a lot of improvements. And then powerlifting, four students represented Oshkosh North State, and 11 out of 30 lifters had a chance to go to Nationals. And then for spring sports, girls' soccer so far has won and tied another game. Baseball, I think it's 1 to 2 now, they just had a game yesterday. Softball, 101 track, they had three track meets so far. And then some Spartans events that happened was some FFA, so the Valentine's Day flowers throughout the week. Solo Ensemble happened in March 1st. Spring fling, which is where anybody in the community can come into the school and do some Easter egg hunting and Easter fun, that was hosted by Polaris. The BSU Annual Assembly, junior ACT was held on March 11th, but was scheduled to the 19th due to the technology. Spring break was on March 24th through March 28th, and then pre-ACT held in April 1st and 2nd. So state bounds, so congratulations to the Oshkosh North Spartan basketball team for going to State. Unfortunately, we didn't win champions, but it was really cool seeing the Mass State. It was the first time I was ever in that arena, and it was really big and really nice. And then another big congratulations to the Oshkosh North Powerlifting Team State Qualifiers, and then I'll think that went on there, but forensics also went to State as well. And then some upcoming events, we have No School on April 11th, and then prom is on April 26th. Our prom theme this year is Enchanted Gardens or Enchanted Forest. Teacher Appreciation Week is on May 8th through the 12th, and then we are starting a new exec board for Student Council, we're starting voting for that. And then post-prom donations, if anybody has any post-prom donations, please contact Mrs. Leaders, Dent, or Mr. Griffith. It's just a way for students to have a little more fun after prom. So if any donations wants to be held, please feel free to contact them. And I think that's it.
Question.
Thanks, Faith.
Can I ask a question real quick?
So I appreciate the report, I also want to just point out, we had a pretty incredible, which goes with the state basketball, so Xavier Mitchell was named Mr. Basketball in the state of Wisconsin, which is an incredible honor, like he's only the second boy in the history of the Oshkosh Area School District to get that, and also finished number three on the all-time leading scorers list of Wisconsin for the history of boys' basketball in Wisconsin, so a really incredible accomplishment. He's also the only one in the top 10 that goes to a Division 1 school, so a lot of smaller schools, because you can score more points there, and so I just want to shout out to Xavier and all the hard work that he does. I also saw him at the Y this morning, or Tuesday, two days ago, I saw him at the Y at 6:00 AM walking in with a ball, so he has earned it, so I just wanted to add on to that, so thanks for your report, Faith, I appreciate it.
I'm going to take it back for just a minute. I wanted to make a comment about the Altus Art Show. Blows your mind the talent that was there, and very well-attended, really, really spectacular. So we've had a lot of wonderful art tonight, and that was just kind of the icing on the cake to see all the high school students there. Perfect.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, go ahead.
That's all right.
Well, I just wanted to say, what kind of prom donations, post-prom, are you looking for food or?
We're not particularly looking for food, we're looking for any, our theme for prom, for post-prom is basically carnival-themed, we're having a lot of carnival events, so any donations, like I would say, any like objects or things that you would like to donate, I would say like any prize.
Okay, okay, just curious. Thank you, excuse me, sorry.
That's okay. I missed the retirement recognition list, and I never want to miss the retirement recognition list, so I'd like to go back to that, please, before we hand it back over to Brian. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 retirees tonight. First one is J.C. McMahon, cross-categorical teacher at Carl Trager since 2013. Janelle Retzloff, speech and language pathologist, Ready for Learning since 1994. Robert Schuhart, janitor, Oshkosh West High School, 1996. Robert Smurling, janitor, Oshkosh North High School, since Robert Smurling, janitor, Oshkosh North High School, since 2014. Kelly Spanbauer, art teacher, Oshkosh West High School, 1996. And Michelle Stamen, food service director, Oshkosh West High School Food Service, since 2016. I'll turn it over to Dr. Herzak.
Thank you. This group, like others, represents some of the finest employees we have in the school district, and I didn't have the privilege of working with all of them, but I have had interaction over time with Kelly Spanbauer, who is retiring as an art teacher from Oshkosh West. She was actually at the Altroso event on Sunday afternoon with her students, and she's a mainstay of that. This event has been going on for 17 years, and you can always find Kelly there, especially on Sunday afternoon when the awards are given. She will be missed. And Bob Schuhart, West janitor since 1996. I've known Bob for a number of years, ever since his twins were, I think, elementary school age, and dedicated, hard-working individual, have had some really good conversations with him, and so I will miss those. And finally, Michelle Stamen. She's been with the district for nine years, and has really done great things with food service in terms of expanding their operation to doing catering and special events such as the new, or the Teacher of the Year program and so on. So to all these individuals, whether I work directly with them or not, I like to wish them a long, happy, and healthy retirement, and of course, remind them that they're always welcome to come back and serve as substitutes in our district. So thank you to all of our retirees tonight.
Thank you very much.
And I also have, I have known and met two of the other retirees. Mrs. McMahon, this is actually her second shot at retirement, so maybe she'll stick this time. But she was a cross cat teacher at E. Cook while my students were there, and my students were not actually her students, but in a lot of ways, she kind of adopted the whole school. She was a mainstay at E. Cook, and like, I have two things that I remember from her specifically. She was working with a little boy who was non-verbal, who absolutely loved dinosaurs. So every single time there was any kind of ask for what does staff need or want, she would always collect anything dinosaur-related, because that's how that kid connected and communicated. And I think that she made a very big difference in his and so many other kids' lives. And she, I remember the kids were learning about, I think, you know, this time of year, about maple syrup, and she made videos from home from tapping her own trees, and that they took to all of their general ed classrooms, too. So it's really, she was a terrific teacher and will be very missed. Ms. Retzloff, I only met her this fall when I was kind of doing my tour, trying to understand early learning a little bit better in the school district. And through that, I also learned a lot about the positions that we don't hear about every day. And speech and language pathologists and the work they do, especially with our youngest learners, to help them get the support they need to get started on the right path, is so very important, and it's also a position that's often very hard for us to fill. And I appreciate that all that she has done, especially with the early learning program. I know she worked in different areas in the district as well, but ended at early learning. And that is, takes a very special person to work with the youngest kids and their families to help transition them to school. So congratulations to both of them, and thank you to all of them for their service.
Thank you for your input. Thank you very much. Okay, now we get back to Dr. Davis.
Okay. So have a referendum timeline posted in your materials today as a timeline for our projects, but I wanted to start tonight before we get into that timeline, ask you any questions on that. I want to work through just some thank yous, and certainly, this was a full community effort for the referendum, so I just want to make sure that we have some proper recognitions tonight. So first of all, thank you to the voters of Oshkosh for their support for our current and future generations of kids. The results from last Tuesday confirm the community's dedication to continuing to make Oshkosh a great place to live and to learn. When we are completed with Phase Two, students will have, and this isn't an exhaustive list, but it includes some of the high points. Number one, air conditioning in all of our middle school and elementary school settings, allowing for comfortable learning environments year-round for our students and for our staff. Performance art space at Oshkosh North High School that will build pride in our north, build and continue to build pride in our north music and art programs, along with relieving pressure at the West Auditorium. Number three, a central place for our youngest learners and their families to come and learn that's specifically renovated for four-year-old bodies. And fourth, renovated new learning spaces that will bring natural light and collaborative spaces that are just not possible in our current configuration. So these are a few of the many transformative upgrades that will occur over the next four years because of our community's support. Again, we just want to thank all the people that came out to vote last Tuesday. Next, our school boards, so past and certainly present school board. Want to thank you for developing and stewarding Phase Two through a winding road, and we know it was a winding road, to give the Oshkosh voters even a chance to approve this question. Without your support and feedback, this would not have been possible, so I just want to thank all of you for that. Our community leaders, this was always a community and continues to be a community-driven plan. So community leaders who put together our four-phase facilities plan, starting back in 2018, 2019, as part of our Facility Advisory Committee 1.0, and in 2021, 2022, as part of FAC 2.0. The improvements that were passed as part of Phase Two are ideas that came directly from these groups, so I just want to thank the leaders who had taken time in the past to have that. In addition, thanks to the Chamber of Commerce and Go EDC for their formal endorsements that provided a jumpstart to the community awareness for these projects. Those endorsements, I believe, made a significant difference in our approval. This unprecedented collaboration is what continues to make our community thrive. We thank you and look forward to working with both of you for many years to come. Next, our entire O A S D staff. Every day, all right, I knew I was going to get, I didn't want to get through this. Our entire O A S D staff, every day, we have 1,500 employees waking up to do their part to make sure that our students are safe, are fed, and learning, prepared for their futures. They all played a critical part in building trust in our schools to allow these projects to be approved, so I just want to thank everyone who is formerly part of our district. Our leadership team of principals and executive team members, who have provided continual feedback and communication on the need for these projects. These communications have been critical to our success. Some special recognition to our weekly referendum team, who has been working on these projects for over a year straight. Assistant Superintendent of Operations Julie Conrad, Executive Director of Business Services Drew Nihans, Director of Facilities Jim Fox, Communications Director Katie Neiman, Director of Community Engagement and Equity Anthony Miller, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent Sherry Wertz, and our Bray team, who has been an important partner for us. I appreciate all of your commitment to being responsive to the community needs and finding solutions that both supported our community and will benefit kids for generations to come. So thank you. Thank you. I feel blessed to be able to work with such a strong group of professionals. From a community standpoint, and I'll end with this, please know that we take very seriously our responsibility to steward the money and the projects as we're moving forward. We'll be bringing monthly updates to the board beginning next month in May as we begin our design process to continue our commitment to transparency and communication with these projects. So thank you for allowing me to provide that recognition and thank yous.
And I'd like to take the meeting back again, if I may. The board would like to thank you, your administrative team, and every single staff member in the Oshkosh area school district for the leadership that you provided through your staff, your tenacity, your positive attitude when sometimes it wasn't so positive, and your can-do-it feeling throughout this whole thing. It made a difference. The number of listening sessions that you conducted was amazing, and I think it really got the word out. And as I said in my opening, it really was a community effort. No matter how you voted, you learned a lot more about the Oshkosh area school district and where it's going. And maybe you didn't like one part of it, but when this gets done, it's going to be a comprehensive educational masterpiece for this community for decades to come. So thank you very much from all of us to you and your entire staff.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. So again, part of what was posted with your materials tonight is a 30,000-foot look at a project schedule. One of the important things, and we'll have a lot more details, as I mentioned, we'll have monthly updates to the board starting next month. But one of the things we wanted to get out ahead of time is just making sure that people understand just how long it takes to be able to get feedback on these projects. Like, there's some thought that we passed it last Tuesday, and we'll have air conditioning in buildings by the time we get to August. And so we have a lot of feedback that happens as we work through these projects, especially with staff members, and so we want to be able to honor that time. So this is a similar process that we used for Phase One, and that we'll be using for Phase Two as we move forward. Again, there's always the idea that there might be some flexibility in this, but wanted to make sure that that was a public document that we started with, and again, we'll fine-tune this as we're moving forward. We've already begun to go out to some specific schools. Today started at Shapiro, to be able to communicate with those staff members to answer any of those questions, and we'll continue to do that for all of the buildings that are affected as we're moving forward. Yeah, so that's what I have for a referendum update. As I mentioned, we'll have monthly updates coming beginning in May and continuing throughout the four years of construction.
Will this be on, other than in the board documents, is it on a website yet, or will it be?
Yes, we'll put it on the, we'll put it on the website, and we can put it under the referendum tab.
Yeah, that's okay. We'll know what it'll be called now.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. That's what I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And your good news report.
All right. So in addition to what the Spartans and Wildcats had, and there's maybe a little bit of repetition, but that doesn't hurt, because there's great things going on throughout the district. So again, want to congratulate the North High forensics team, the state-level forensics team. Our students performed exceptionally well at state. The state competition in Madison with Emily, Jack, and Eli Vance into the semifinals. Just incredibly proud of those talented students and their outstanding accomplishments at the state level, so congratulations to them. Perry Tippler Middle School Choir has partnered with the Day-by-Day Warming Shelter, raising nearly $2,000 and collecting numerous community donation. These talented students will present From Darkness to Light, A Journey of Hope, a concert highlighting homelessness issues on May 22nd at the Alberta Kimball Auditorium. It's an impressive initiative that's entirely student-led. Community members wishing to contribute can drop off donation items at Perry Tippler Middle School. Ed Bell Phillips, co-teachers Riley Lovesless and Ashley Dane have developed an adaptive family and consumer ed sciences course that provides all students with the opportunities to develop crucial life skills. The class recently completed their sewing unit designed to enhance fine motor skills and build confidence through hands-on learning. This thoughtful, thoughtfully structured approach reinforced the important skills fostered with independence, creativity, perseverance through adaptive learning. So thanks for all your efforts, and great job to the students that participated in that. Our food service team has enhanced its offerings with an expanded breakfast selections featuring additional protein options and fresh fruit alongside a new lunch rotation options. Second graders at M. Line Cook Elementary provided valuable feedback while enjoying the new menu items. Our food service department remains committed to gathering student input through surveys to guide future menu adjustments and introduce new options based on student preferences. Students in Miss Newians class at Menominee Elementary School concluded their Kings and Queens Knowledge Unit from the CKLA literacy curriculum with a royal celebration. The young scholars dressed as kings and queens enjoyed a fancy tea party and participated in a ball where they learned to waltz. This engaging accumulating activity brought literacy to life, allowing students to experience royal traditions firsthand after completing their studies. Congratulations to Oshkosh West seniors Talen and Jacob for signing college athletic letters of intent. Talen will play soccer at UW Oshkosh, while Jacob will compete in tennis at UW Stevens Point. Additionally, our Oshkosh Co-op Gymnastics Team, as we mentioned earlier, were conference champions, so congratulations, ladies, and qualified for the WI State meet. And we talked about the wrestlers, but again, Ryland, Eddie, and Nelson competed at the state tournament with Ryland Fish Fifth and Eddie as state runner-up, a great accomplishment. And we had, again, seven Decca students representing West at the state competition, and both boys' and girls' bowling teams qualified for the state high school bowling tournament. So congratulations to all of these accomplishments. Job well done. Our Boxteem Vulcan First Lego League team competed among Wisconsin's top 28 teams at the state championship in Waukesha, impressing judges with their innovative Boxteem buoy designed to detect rip currents and save lives. The team executed a perfect run during the robot matches and earned a Core Values Award, qualifying them to represent Wisconsin at the American Robotics National Tournament in Jersey City this May. On the heels of this exciting success, the public is invited to a showcase at Perry Tippler Middle School on Friday, April 25th, featuring a robot demonstration, gift basket raffle, and concession stand to support the talented students from Elps, Tippler, Trager, and Bell Phillips Middle Schools. O A S D's Wave Robotics team is also continuing their success. After an exciting regional competition, Wave Robotics students are heading to the Nationals in Houston. They battled hard and earned the prestigious Engineering Inspiration Award. So congratulations to all of our young engineers on that fantastic accomplishment. Oshkosh West, as Jory had said, hosted the state leadership conference, where it had over 700 leaders from around the state to participate here in speakers, breakout sessions, and do some problem-solving exercise. Again, we're proud of all of the work that they've done. They also accomplished a service project where they stuffed more than 900 bags of goodies to donate to families at the Ronald McDonald House.
That's nice.
So well done, Jory. Congratulations. Our entire community is invited to join us at our third annual fundraising gala on Friday, May 2nd, at the Waters. Proceeds for this year's event will benefit our athletics, competitive co-curriculars, and adaptive sports league. This is your chance to showcase your finest derby attire, catch up with friends and community members, enjoy delicious food and student-made desserts, all in support of a worthy cause. This year's events will also feature district athletic memorabilia on display, as well as themed games and competitions. You can learn more and buy tickets on our district website. And finally, just a long list of the places that I've been fortunate to be able to attend over the last month, so thank you, everybody, for your continued engagement.
Brian, if I can, can I say something?
Absolutely.
With Boxteem Vulcan and Wave Robotics, I just want to say two clarification points. Friday, April 25th, it's kind of an open house, and Coach Amy especially, but a lot of people, obviously, we have a lot of great things happening with robotics in Oshkosh. We need more FLL teams, the middle school, upper elementary middle school teams. This is a great first step for anybody who's interested. Please consider coming on April 25th. We can build on an amazing thing that's very unique to Oshkosh. And also to clarify, I'm quite certain that we've qualified for world championships, correct? It is not just a national, it is mostly Wisconsin, I mean, mostly US teams, but it is the world championships. That is the huge goal. That Boxteem Vulcan didn't quite make it to this year, but Wave did, which is incredible for them to do two seasons in a row.
Yes.
Even better than Nationals.
Thank you for the clarification, yes.
That's great.
Congratulations, and good luck.
Thank you.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. And that concludes the superintendent's good news report for tonight.
A lot of good news.
I have a question.
Sure.
I just wanted to recognize all those bullet points there and ask Brian if he's busy. Thank you for all that you do, and that is a lot of things to do in a short amount of time, so I just thought we should recognize that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And again, blessed to be able to have, you know, a community that embraces us and our mission, and happy to represent.
Thank you. Onto district administrator supplemental reports. First of all, verbal report from March 12th, board listening session, Mrs. Conrad Peters.
Well, good evening. At the listening session on March 12th, four community members participated. The session covered a variety of topics, including SRO citations, fines, and discipline. Attendees asked about fines associated with SRO citations and if they were paid. A personal story was shared about an incident in school that was handled as discipline rather than a police citation. This led to questions about how similar incidents would be handled today, and concerns about teen court process. The continued need for transparency was expressed. Then that led into further discussion about teen court, the location of teen court, and where that is held. They also asked about district observers and continued transparency. A request was made for data on teen court, including the number of participants and who appeared. Also, a discussion on handling of truancy citations by the court commissioner at teen court was reviewed. It was also brought up about disparities and expectations between North and West. Concerns were raised about the gaps in involvement between North and West, specifically regarding college and career readiness and access to information. An example was given of low- An example was given of low expectations at North compared to West using a study abroad example. Dual credit data, a question was raised about the disaggregated data for dual credit and why it was not reported or included in the format. A suggestion was made to hold a focus group to gather parent experiences. A suggestion was brought up about afternoon recess. A question was raised about the value of afternoon recess and have we considered that? And then, it was also attention to trades and attendee requested increased attention to the trades and trade skills.
I have a question. You mentioned having parent focus groups.
Yep.
Have dates been set for those or any plans underway to execute those?
So, I would wait to hear more about our community engagement planning, but that was one of the suggestions to have focus groups, together parent experiences when it comes to any type of, of things that we are doing within the district.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you talk about afternoon recesses?
So, one person had brought up the piece about have we been looking at what the impact is on students getting outside and having afternoon recess? And does that help with academic performance? So, they were just suggesting that and wondering if we had considered it.
Have you considered it?
From afternoon recess piece? That's a great question. I mean, some schools have after, like, do put that into there and some have that at the lunch period, so, or doing that during lunchtime. So, but that can definitely be a follow-up we can look further into.
I'd like to see it as a follow-up, just to be able to talk, talk through it. Okay. Lot of antsy kids in the afternoon. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nihon's Budget Variance Update?
Good evening. This month's budget variance is through the month of March. The report that was included in your materials is fairly similar to the report you've seen the last three months. There was a little bit more of a, higher of a projected deficit this month, and included in your report was a couple line items that are responsible for the jump from last month. We made a, an adjustment to the interest revenue that we get. That is a little bit lower than what we've, were expecting. So, we did include that adjustment within the projected numbers. And then, again, similar to last month when we talked about the, the health plan and the claims, claims for the month of March came in a little bit higher than anticipated, a few hundred thousand dollars. So, those two line items were the ones that primarily drove the increase in projected deficit from last month to this month. Everything else is tracking similar to what we had. I do want to report that, I know we had talked last month about the food service, Fund 50, and we had gone through quite a list of things that were happening within that department. They did adjust their menus, and as you saw in the report, there was some student input that was also driving that. We did get an increase in, in participation this month. It's, again, revenues run about two months behind, but it is increasing and we are getting a little bit more excitement from, from what we have been, which is also good in what we were trying to do. And I, I know they're working with Mrs. Nieman on potentially getting a parent's communication out on that as well. Any questions at all on, on the report? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And the 2025-2026 student fee schedule, Mrs. Conrad Peters?
In your packet is a written staff report that describes what we are proposing at the next board meeting for what resolution when it comes to the 25-26 school year fees. One thing that we do on an annual basis, and we have been doing this to increase access for students and families to programming, et cetera, is working to reduce the number of fees. And we've made quite, quite the progress, and I believe what's being presented is a major next step in almost eliminating all fees. So, the policy that dictates this is Policy 6152, that we can levy fees, or the Board of Education can levy fees. But we are very much, once again, through our process of taking down barriers and challenges for families, want to eliminate them as much as possible. The fees reviewed are determined and annually reviewed. The funding generated by a fee has historically taken care of extras that building budgets are unable to accommodate. We have, as building, as building leaders, as district leaders, been working on how can we make sure that we have that budgeted in our budgets, whether it's in the building accounts and the district accounts, to make sure that, once again, we're taking down barriers. Once again, we are concerned about that and we are determined to eliminate those fees. So, as the percentage of families who qualify for free and reduced lunch has increased, remaining fees at the secondary level have really come under question, and especially after our KPI reports when we're talking about access to participating in activities and how do we increase that. So, we, we are suggesting that eliminating fees, and in particular for activities, is really going to take down that, one of those barriers that goes through that. So, for the 23-24 school year, there was a total of 65, approximately 65,000 of fees were collected at the high school level for activities and athletics, and that is like way underneath the amount that is actually needed to run that. And for in this current school year, we're tracking at approximately 30,000 of fees had been here to date. As we're looking at budgets and we're looking at line items, like, we have determined that through that we can, we can take and we can eliminate those fees and put that right into, right into budgets. So, our recommendation is going to be to, one, maintain the driver's education fee at 425 for classroom and behind-the-wheel instruction. It's something that we have to put out there, but remember, driver's education is not for credit, and there is now a mechanism in place where students and families can apply to have that directly paid to the Oshkosh area school district. It's not perfect, but at the same time, it's a mechanism that wasn't there before from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. We are suggesting, we are recommending to eliminate all high school athletic fees. Reduce the parking permit fee to $20 and the replacement fee of $10. This would be going from a fee of 45 and 20, and this is really about making sure we're maintaining documentation of cars and other permits on our sites. And then, finally, once again, eliminating all activity fees when it comes to that. So, currently, for the activities that are listed, the fee is $20 with an individual limit of 40 and a family limit of 60. At this point in time, we feel we can absolutely budget for that and allow for those pieces and take down that final barrier of participation. And this aligns with engagement and communication on our strategic plan and the KPI of student involvement in activities.
That's amazing. Mr. Wright?
Well, that's a tremendous amount of progress. When I first got elected to the school board, we had a lot of fees, and we've gotten rid of a lot of fees, and we're getting rid of more, and that's wonderful because those barriers are being eliminated. And there still are going to be other barriers, but the elimination of these barriers, you know, the fees, will help us then take the next step so that more kids continue to be involved in more positive things. So, thank you. I know it's been a journey and a lot of work, and there's been a lot of discussion on these things, but it's a lot of progress.
Mrs. Carolyn and then Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. I had a question. First of all, I, I agree that I am so happy to see a lot of these fees going away because it is a barrier for some students, and congratulations for already reducing it by half in the current year. The revenue from parking fees and high school IDs at West is less than 20,000, but the revenue from Oshkosh North is about $2,000? That seems like a huge gap. What accounts for that?
Yes, definitely a huge gap. So, so number one, we have more students that are applying for a parking permit at Oshkosh West, and you also have more students that are looking, seeking to park or driving a car to school at Oshkosh, doing them say, at Oshkosh West. So, that's the best that we can do to say how we account for that.
But the parking is the same price at both schools?
Parking is the same price at both schools, correct.
Have they been tracked similarly and been collected similarly or not?
I do not, we can find that out, I do not.
I, I was given an answer that said that they weren't. So, just to be clear, it wasn't, there's not been consistent collections.
Okay.
From what I was told.
Yep, yeah. And that's something that we need to take a look at.
Right.
You know, between, as we, as we have the fees that we do have and make sure that we have consistency between the schools and collections.
Dr. Herzog?
I am really happy to see the elimination of these fees. Over my tenure as an employed individual in the district and now on the board, we've gone from materials fees, which were somewhat nebulous in terms of what were those for? I think they went for consumables largely.
Yes.
But we've eliminated those now. We've, and we've reduced, over time, the, the maximum amount of family would pay for athletic fees. Now, we're eliminating those entirely. Probably six years ago, we raised parking fees, which was not popular, and now we're eliminating, reducing those from what they had been. I think we're making great progress there. And again, state law says that students are entitled to a free and public education, and we're moving closer to that, that free. $55,000 is $55,000. I don't minimize that. At the same time, I think in a multi-million dollar budget, over 100 million, I think we should be able to find 55,000 to replace the projected loss of revenues. The one question or area that I'm, that I'm concerned about is the driver education. I see a lot of people coming to the St. Vincent de Paul store in need of help with rent and utilities, and we know that we have, as a district, roughly, I believe it's 47% free and reduced lunch. Finding $425 in your budget when you're struggling to pay your rent, put food on the table for your kids, and pay your utility bills, which could be cut off starting next month or earlier, later this month, is, is problematic. I'd like to know what we're doing to proactively inform people that if they fill out the, the correct forms, they could get that fee either waived or reduced. I see this as an extension of what we talk about repeatedly of wanting our kids to be college, career, and community ready. And if you are going, if you're a teenager and you're going to be working basically second shift, you can't rely on the city buses because they shut down too early. But if you have a driver's license and your family can come and pick you up or allow you to take the car, that allows you to, to be productive in the community. So, I'd like to know what we're doing to be proactive to make sure people understand they can either qualify for a free fee on this or a reduced fee. And how many students do we have in our high schools, 912, who do not have, who have not taken classroom and behind the wheel?
Yeah. So...
I don't need to know that tonight, but I'd like to know that later this month.
No, and we can get, we can get those numbers. The other thing is that remember that students, this is not, it used to be that driver's education was a high school graduation requirement. Once that was eliminated, you can, as an individual or as a family, you can go anywhere to get the driver's edu, driver's education service. So, we would actually have to, like, survey or poll that because, just because you, you, not everybody necessarily took it through, like, through the school pieces.
I got it, sure.
And so, this has been an ongoing piece of, like, searching for where is, where is the funding, where can we do this? I want to shout out Stacy Bretherower, who is our Driver's Education Coordinator. She is pretty fabulous when it comes to how do we make sure that we take down as many barriers as possible for students to be able to get those things. I'm not going to say that this is easy. It has been a challenge. The promise from the Wisconsin DOT when it came to the grant funding, et cetera, was that it was going to be more. I don't think they realized how much was really going to be asked for when they put out that some certain, like, ask, because you go out on their website right now and they'll say, here's where you can go to apply, but, like, all the funding has been used up for this particular fiscal year. So, this is a constant piece, but as this board has determined before, offering driver's education in our schools so that students actually have access to it, like, during the school day, et cetera, has been a commitment from this board, and we are doing our best to take that down as low as possible and help and assist families to be able to get that fee either waived or paid for.
Okay, so I'll withdraw my second question and just go with the first one, stick with the first one.
Yeah.
What are we doing proactively to make sure that all students know that they could qualify for either a free or reduced fee on, on this? I think particularly of our second language learners, our new immigrants to this country who maybe can't understand what's coming through on infinite campus or whatever communication we're using with parents. And how do those students know? Because having an extra driver in the family can be a great help to a family.
100%.
And so, I see this as, as, as something really key that we need, we need to provide. I'd like to hear from our high school students if you want to share anything about, about this one.
I personally did not take driver's ed through the school, so I can't really speak on specifically how our school does it, but I do know a lot of people that did take it through the school, and from what I had heard, they really enjoyed being able to leave from West and get back to West instead of having to go somewhere else or maybe have one that won't, if you live too far out of the way, you can't always get home. So, being, having a drop-off at school is really helpful.
As someone who has, like, a pretty big family, I have a, a bunch of siblings and then plus cousins as well, so I didn't take driver's ed from the school as well, but I do know that the school really does offer a great program for, especially second language kids. I do know that they do help. I know a few of my friends, they did go through the school and they say it was a lot more reliable compared to outside sources, especially the fact that it is in school and it does help with second language as well. I think having a really, like, just a prominent, another person to drive you around school as well is just, it's a lot more better. And I was able to do a lot more things since I was able to drive and I did have access to a lot of those resources too. So, it helped me be more involved with a lot of things. So, I think it's a great time.
Thank you. I'm sorry I put you on the spot. And I do appreciate your input.
So, I, I will echo what everyone else said. I greatly appreciate getting closer to free and appropriate education. My one question is, is can we say that the entirety of this $55,000, that that's basically going into Fund 10?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Milton?
I'd like to piggyback on what Barb said too. I'm, I'm, and I'm, this is new information that you just said now too, that we're, that state is apparently out of the funding for this fiscal year because that's still a quarter left of, I don't, I don't know how many kids that that would impact. I'm deeply concerned about the cost of driver's ed and the importance of it. I'd say that's one of the most important things for kids to be college, career, and community ready. And, but for all of this, we're doing amazing things trying to make it more accessible, and if people don't know that it's accessible, it doesn't matter. Like, I want to see the follow-up of how we are going to be communicating to our students and to our families about, because I want to see this reflected in the activities and involvement that we get our, every six-month reports on. And I guess maybe that shouldn't somehow record, include something about driver's ed if we're kind of grouping them in with those same fees. But I think the driver's ed campaign is probably different than the campaign to remind people about all the activities that are available at low or no cost. The driver's ed campaign, it needs, i- if it's through any kind of online source right now where people have to fill out the free and reduced lunch, we're right now in our school district, it's not incentivized, at least as of today, who knows, to fill out that free and reduced lunch. I know we need people to, but it's not a simple form, and I don't think we can expect that anywhere near the majority of our families can make through that on their own, even if they're not learning English as a second language. So, I, and it would be really great to hear a driver's ed report on, because it is true that many of the students do choose to go out, and I can also see, as a parent whose kid did go outside of the district, having the behind-the-wheel coordinated through the school would be amazing, and that's the only way many kids could, could have access to this, not, regardless of the money cost. So, I really would like to tie this into seeing the impact that this has on... So I really would like to tie this into seeing the impact that this has on involvement and extracurricular engagement as a KPI as well.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you.
And now we will go to committee reports. Education Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. The Education Committee met on Wednesday, April 2nd at seven-thirty a.m. following the April Fool's Day, the election. Equity Plan was one of our topics. It's being proposed that the Equity Plan Key Performance Indicators, or KPIs, be transitioned into the District Strategic Plan to be integrated into the Key Performance Indicators instead of standing alone. Mr. Anthony Miller provided a brief overview stating that in the past year, of the thirty-nine action steps, thirty-two were addressed, three have future due dates, three are scheduled for completion at a later date, and one was not fully executed. Moving forward, the KPI assigned director for each of those steps, and Mr. Miller would work collaboratively toward the execution of each strategy. The Community Engagement Plan is set to be developed by Mr. Miller with pillars including business and school partnerships, volunteers, and post-secondary opportunities. Between July and, excuse me, April twenty-third and July, ideas and feedback regarding the Community Engagement Plan will be collected from community members, and a draft of the plan will then be presented to the Board in July with final approval sought in August. The committee expressed concerns with the draft of the Equity Plan and made suggestions. And so as a result, it will be coming back to the Board on April twenty-third for review. Dr. Coleman explained the importance of equity work being embedded throughout the system by integrating strategies from the Equity Plan within the Strategic Plan. This would allow Mr. Miller to leverage partnerships and build relationships. The new integration will allow for accountability while addressing needs. We also talked about the elementary iPad field test, which I believe we have on our consent agenda tonight. Jason Schmidt explained that historically Chromebooks have been purchased as part of funding from the Community Approved Learning Without Limits Operational Referendum. However, feedback from grades K-2 has been that Chromebooks are often difficult and time-consuming for students at, at the K-2 level to operate, and therefore Chromebooks tend to be underutilized at those levels. In an effort to support teachers and students, it was suggested that iPads might be a better option. Mr. Schmidt is suggesting a field study to give teachers and students a chance to use the iPads with, let's see, with rugged cases and keyboards, which would result in a cost of roughly a million dollars. Professional development would also be provided for the, the teaching staff. Should the testing results determine that the iPads are the new direction, another million dollars would be needed for the purchase of the iPads next year, requiring additional Board approval. However, all of this money had been approved back in 2020, and so the money has already been budgeted and can only be used for this purpose because it was part of a referendum. While Chromebooks are less of an expense at approximately four-hundred thousand dollars, the iPads have a longer lifespan and a higher trade-in value. Mr. Schmidt also discussed the Data Dashboard Selection Report. The committee noted that EduClimer has been used by the district since 2017. And while the district does use it to track some data, it does not provide the support for what we want it to do, especially the way it displays certain discipline data. So feedback is being gathered and new options are being sought, and Mr. Schmidt will report back to the Education Committee when there is a recommendation. The curriculum adoption proposal for CKLA, known as Core Knowledge Language Arts, was presented by Dr. Brown. She gave us a summary of the goals, purpose, and curriculum adoption timeline for the CKLA curriculum that would be compliant with Act 20 requirements. There were a wide range of teachers who were involved in the field study that was done in forty percent of the district's classrooms, including new teachers and veteran teachers. Dr. Coleman noted that while the results are not where they need to be, progress is being made and work will also be, will need to be done to change mindsets. The shift needs to be in the direction of students taking on more responsibility for their learning. Dr. Coleman explained that the steps toward proficiency begin with excitement for reading, followed by growth, which leads to proficiency, which usually takes three to five years to move through those steps. Dr. Brown noted that CKLA is teacher-friendly, family-friendly, and student-friendly. And a recommendation to adopt and purchase CKLA will come to the Board on April twenty-third at a cost of approximately three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. A future agenda item request was for information about professional development framework and who the instructors are for professional development. And finally, the next meeting of the committee is scheduled for May 1st at seven-thirty. However, the Board Reorganization Meeting is on May 28th, and that might affect the next meeting of the Education Committee. And the meeting was adjourned at eight-fifty-two p.m.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it was a long one.
Facilities and Finance.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. We had several agenda items, with Mr. Nihans leading the way, talking about budget revisions. He presented DPI information regarding budget variances. We also noted that the DPI allows up to two years to spend the common school funds, which are funds that come from the state, to be used for school libraries and media centers. We talked about a variety of topics, including voucher expense, Achievement Gap Reduction, or AGR, program revenue, equalization aid, Fund X tax levy, regular curriculum expenses, Refugee School Impact Grant, Afghan Refugee School Impact Grant, CTE Incentive Grant, Common School Funds, again, Fund 21 and Fund 38, the tax levy. We also spent some time talking about the Merrill site. The Crushing Project is, or was nearly complete as of the date of our March 13th meeting. Gravel removal was to be done by the end of March, and construction would begin in May, is set to begin in May of the athletic field areas. We reviewed landscape plans once again. We also received information that the family of a former Merrill Middle student is going to choose a specific memorial tree for their daughter who passed away during her time at Merrill. Her tree was inadvertently removed as part of the removal process or deconstruction process. There will also be a plaque that will recognize this, this young student. Brick distribution is set for May 6th from noon until 2:00 p.m. There will be one brick per family, and additional bricks would be available if any remain after the initial distributions. Finally, we talked about district transition to Skyward Business and HR Software Systems. The transition is to go to Skyward Cumulative and to, with a live date, a go-live date of August 11th, 2025, with training being provided in August to include videos, step-by-step instruction, and face-to-face training. Our next meeting will be tomorrow morning at seven-thirty in this room. That's April 10th. And because we have a very long agenda, what we don't accomplish tomorrow, we intend to finish on April 17th, one week later, also at seven-thirty in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislative Committee.
Thank you, and I'm happy to give Dr. Herzog a little break again. The Legislative Committee met on Thursday, March 20th, in the boardroom. We got an update on the CSU 6 Legislative Breakfast from Julie Conrad Peters. She provided a report that said that they discussed, the group discussed their top three recommendations from the Blue Ribbon Commission School Funding Discussion that was started in January of 2019. The top three included per pupil adjustment and per pupil aid, special education categorical aid, and three, mental health. Conrad Peters stated that Representative Dan Fine recommended that each district continue to budget at today's level of spending, zero increase or flat budget. Fine stated that the Supreme Court rulings will drive the next budget, and cases to watch include Act 10, Legislative Oversight Spending, Policy Bills versus Fiscal Bills, vetoes, and number four, 404-year rule. Then we got some legislative updates from Superintendent Davis. And we discussed the potential increase to special education funding and what would happen if we did get that. We don't know if we will, we haven't in the past. But if we did get special education funding reimbursement to sixty percent, that would equate to seven and a half to eight million more in the general fund. We also talked about per pupil funding has not been tracking, tracking with inflation levels, and there continues to be a low revenue limit issue. In spite of a little boost in the last biennium, that was to bring districts across the state closer together. We talked about equal funding for special education students in public schools and voucher schools. That would be a helpful thing, as voucher students are receiving ninety percent funding for special education students. We discussed Act 10 and how that moves forward will certainly affect the upcoming budget. Superintendent Davis stated that at the upcoming WIAA Annual Meeting at the end of April, name, image, and likeness will likely be adopted for high school athletics, which will be interesting. That will allow students to make money off their name and likeness as long as there are no ties to the school, the district, or the WIAA. And then Dr. Herzog provided an update on the Wisconsin Association of School Board perspectives on the two topics of special education funding and spendable resources as a handout. The meeting adjourned at 9:11 a.m. because we were super efficient that day, and I appreciated that. And the next meeting of this committee is scheduled for Tuesday, April 22nd at 8:30 a.m., and that will also be a super efficient meeting, I promise. So, thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Policy and Governance Committee.
Thank you. The Policy and Governance Committee met on March 20th at seven-thirty in the morning. Board members in attendance included Carlin, Smilnick, and Wyman. We went over twenty-something policies, and it resulted in a four-page summary. And I just want to point out, I'm not going to read that. You can all take a deep sigh of relief. But a shout-out to Sherry, who has taken these minutes and put them in a very nice summary. So I just want to say, if anyone wants to read all the details, please, you can find this online. I'm just going to read the highlights. So Policy 5112, entrance age and remove the health examination language since it is not legally required for the practice of the district. Revisions to this policy are on the agenda for Board approval tonight. The committee also reviewed Policies 2270, 2416, 2522, 3213, 5605, 8390 for technical updates and recommended them to come to the full Board for the approval this evening. We also reviewed a new policy, Policy 5411, the third grade promotion and retention, which will put the district in compliance with Act 20 requirements before the July deadline, July 1st deadline. The policy is on the agenda for approval by the Board this evening. The committee then removed, reviewed seventeen policies with suggested updates by Niola and one new policy of the eighteen policies reviewed. Fifteen are on tonight's agenda for Board approval. Policies returning for additional discussion include 5610, suspension and expulsion, along with 8700 regarding lactating employees, 7544, the use of social media as well. There were two policies that were approved to move forward to the Board for approval, but also to return to, to the committee in the future. That includes 5771, search and seizure, and 8390, animals on the district, district property. The full list of policies and minutes can be found on the district website. We adjourned at 8:29. I can't believe we went over all of those policies in less than an hour. And the next meeting is Tuesday, April 22nd at seven-thirty a.m. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much, everyone. We have no speakers signed up for this evening, so we will move to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the Board has been furnished with background material on each item or is discussed at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Right, and Carlin?
Yes.
All right, Carlin.
Aye.
Do it. Aye. Herzog.
Aye.
Tess.
Aye.
Smilnick.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Wyman. Aye.
Thank you. Any requests for future agenda items? Mrs. Milton?
I'd like to have us a review of engagement and participation in field trips and, well, basically how they're, how and where they're being offered, and when kids are being excluded from them based off either not completing the permission slips or for other reasons.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Carlin.
This isn't really a future agenda item per se, and I feel really dumb that I can't find it, but could somebody please send out the school visit spreadsheet so that we can fill in our school visits? I think the deadline is...
Can do it before we leave.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, any announcements? Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. I know we've, we've talked about the Altrusa International Club of Oshkosh and its annual art show, but I really wanted to give out, give a shout-out to the Altrusa International Club of Oshkosh, who make a real effort and have done so over seventeen years to make sure that our high school students are recognized for their, their art skills. This year, there were over a hundred entries. There were eight awards that were made. There was an award made for, two awards made for third place, two for second place, two for third place, first place. There was a Best Photography Award, and there was a Best in Show. I just, I just think it's so important that we recognize successes wherever we find it in the district. And here is a, a group that is collaborating with us to make sure that our art students receive some of the recognition they deserve. We, we have an opportunity to see and hear our musicians, but we don't really have a comparable number of opportunities or outlets for our art students. And so having the art students here tonight, and I know that we'll have a follow-up meeting with the West Side, art students is really important. And the, I'll give a shout-out as well to the, the art teachers, especially those at the high school, who gather up these, these three D, three-dimensional and two-dimensional pieces of artwork. They set them up at the garden, Hilton Garden. They're there to receive the, the awards, even though some of the students can't be there because they may be working or they have other conflicts. And then they take everything down. And every student who submitted an art piece for this, this event receives a certificate. And if you go to the high school art shows in May that are usually in conjunction with one of the, the music concerts, you'll see how proud those, those students are of those ribbons, whether it was a white one, a red one, a blue one, a purple one, if they won Best in Show, which was won this year by Preston Vang, or if they won the Photography Award, which I believe was a green one. This means a great deal to these students, and I just think it's so important that we've got a, a group collaborating with us in this, in the community. And then what we, we did here tonight, plus the artwork that's hanging around the walls of this building. So again, thank you to all the students who participated. Thank you to Altrusa for making this possible. Thank you for our K-12 art teachers who prepare these students over a lifetime, and, and especially our high school art teachers, who are the unsung heroes. And when they were introduced at this event on Sunday afternoon, hung in the background because they wanted the focus to be on the kids. So as you can tell, I'm enthused about this.
I'm excited.
Okay. Thank you. And now we will adjourn to executive session, where we will be discussing three items. The first one is deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties. The second one is reviewing a expulsion recommendation. And the third one is considering the superintendent contract, notice of non-renewals for regular contracts, and discussion of personnel issue. So moved.
Second. Herzog.
Carlin or Herzog?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do it. Aye. Herzog.
Aye.
Tess.
Aye.
Aye.
Ray. Aye.
Wyman. Carlin.
Aye.
We'll be in room 115, which is all the way down the hallway. A little bit further.